It's two eighty three, that either be. The development of fifty by fifty. Little case at four o'clock. Yes. Good, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to start your COW meeting today. You have any corrections, additions? Whoa. For hot day, we sure gonna move. Wayne?
I have two, please. One is showcasing Wataquin an area. And then, and then the other one is. Just a question on brand relaunch or rebrand launch. There we go.
Gabriella?
Candidate.
Tyler? So we'll use that. On to C D and E. Thank you. So we'll move on to Municipal Service Division.
Good afternoon. So I just wanted to just give a brief overview of some updates, I guess, for Municipal Services Division. Since your last update in September of 2020. For the airport, we had our airport maintenance operator start. In May for the six month term position. And this allows the airport to run seven days a week, which is industry standard for certified airports. Wataquin will also be hosting the 2021 Alberta Air Tour. Wataquin will be the last stop on the tour. And there's going to be some, I believe, some activities planned depending on COVID-19 protocols. The airport has been working with our Economic Development Department on some strategies on how to grow the airport businesses. And how our airport resources can be positioned to other business developments throughout the city. We've also been exploring some partnership opportunities with Edmonton International Airports. And our annual airport barbecue obviously has been postponed due to COVID. However, we will resume those in 2022. For our planning and engineering department, we have in progress, we've partnered with State, their GIS department to map our urban greenery. We have a number of capital projects that is either happening now or just about to happen. And they are, majority of them are on budget and on time. With respect to our development services area. Our development permit applications are slightly down from last year. In 2020 total, we had about 104 development permit applications and to date we are sitting at thirty eight. Our building permit applications are about on par as they were from last year. Last year we had a total of eighty two. Looking at, I guess, just sign permits and business license applications. We don't have the numbers from 2020, so I can't give you a comparison. But they're there for you. Within our Public Works Department, our fleet services have been busy. Make, making, making sure our fleet and equipment are, are safe on the streets. We have had over seventy services completed to date. Our Parks Department has been tree pruning, removing dead trees, planting new trees. The fruit forest is planted in Montgomery Park. They've done numerous flower plantings in the planters along the streets and by the lake park. They've been trapping gophers, removing graffiti tags. And then they've also put in about thirty additional community garden plots from the demand from the community. And they, we had six outdoor skating rinks through the winter, which were very popular. Within our transportation area, through the winter months. Basically, some, a couple of stats here, we've done, did about a hundred and twenty seven loads of sand. Sand that was applied for traction control, forty tons of road salt was used. For ice control and they removed eight hundred and fifty loads of snow from the streets this past winter. Throughout the spring, they've done their street sweeping, which they ended up collecting about five hundred and eighty cubic yards of sand. They've done some road repairs during the spring thaw. There was some, some issues with. I guess compaction issues with some utility work that was done last year. So they've patched that up until we can get in there to pave. Later this summer, they've been doing patch, patching and pothole repairs, a lot of sign replacements. Our alley grading and regraveling program, the Public Works and Utilities, so our Public Works building is nearing completion. They're just working on a few deficiencies before the team can move in. Doing desk control, they've also constructed a new aggregate storage area that's located at the southeast snow disposal site. They've also assisted the fire department in crash simulations for their training purposes. Within our utilities area, there's been a lot of water main repairs, curb cock repairs, hydrant replacements. Catch basin manhole replacements, some isolation valve repairs, as well as working on our lead program. And then within our waste and recycling department, we've seen a slight increase in landfill tonnages. In comparison to last year. And then we had our household hazardous waste roundup the third week of May. Which saw quite a few people run through, dropping off their, their waste. We've also commenced automated waste collection in two of our mobile home parks, Wild Rose Garden Estates and Jubilee Place. And I'm open if anyone has any questions.
Any questions? Wayne?
Two. One of the statements having to deal with, I gotta find it here, bear with me. Under Public Works, Fleet, Parks and Transportation, third bullet, five of eleven commercial vehicles inspections were completed. So the fact that it's five of eleven suggests to me they had planned to do eleven and got five done, or?
Through the chair to Council Nielsen, yes, so far to date, they've completed five of their eleven, so they will still be completing those other six, yes.
Okay. And the other question I have. Do we have? Do we, do we maintain the historical? Data? File. So for example, if I said. Tons of salt put on the road this year. How does that compare to five years ago, ten years ago, fifteen years? Would we have that kind of data? And how many potholes were done this year versus three years ago versus six years ago? Do we, do we collect and hold that kind of material information?
We do keep that information. If, if Council so chooses, I can certainly go and dig up some of those things for stat purposes. I can definitely provide historical data at request, for sure.
Okay. No, just not that I need it or want it. It's just, do we have it if we do need it? Thank you.
You for the question, Tyler?
The airport or the fly-in that they're doing on July tenth, I'm not able to make it. So if the weather's good, that they and another member of the deputy mayor wants to attend. On the city's behalf, or if anybody else wants to, they can. Council Bronk, are you still up for July, no? Oh, it's your last one?
But it's a free breakfast, I'm like.
Free, well, why?
I don't know who's deputy mayor July. Council Black, so if you're available on July tenth, contact Candace Coughlin and she has some information on the fly-in and Kathy might as well.
I have a few questions. One to my, my colleague in Gardening, you were asking about the sand and salt, I think, just before. Budget or winter comes, we always approve so much tonnage for sanding, so. I think we have that on, on record because every year we just, we just buy the ton, we buy it, so. My other question is, at the landfill. When somebody brings in, let's say, topsoil, clay or any. And oh, I know it's free, but it's weight. Does that? Weight go against our total volume what we're allowed, or so let's say we bring a hundred tons of topsoil or clay. Does that go on how much garbage goes landfill, but it's just used for coverage? Does that affect what we're allowed to use?
The tonnages that are actually landfilled, those do not apply to that. If it is used as daily cover. It is not included in the tonnages. However, it will obviously impact the elevation of the landfill, right?
Okay, so it's not, say we're allowed twelve thousand tons a year, bringing a thousand tons of clay, so it doesn't affect that? Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to. RCMP presentation.
Good afternoon, committee. We have a present, a report and quarterly presentation to you today for Q1 2021 from Inspector Keith Durant. Just a reminder to the committee that council did approve RCMP priorities on June fourteenth. And Keith has done his best to try to align his presentation to those priorities, so I will hand the mic to him.
Good afternoon, Council. I have a couple of reports here, I'm going to go over with you, that were submitted earlier, one being the RCMP monthly policing report, municipal policing report. I'll say at the front end here, the first two pages are usually completed by our Ops Strategy Branch, our statistics, statisticians up in headquarters. In which with regards to staffing levels, quarterly estimates on pay, overtime and the budget. And then the last two pages are usually completed by myself with regards to the community priorities and the results thereof. Because I was not going to be here next, that next month at Council to provide a full quarterly update as of the end of June. I took the opportunity now to come in and give you an update as far as I could on Q1. And I will have a full update for you on Q2, which will have all these numbers put in. What I do have for you is my, my best way to fill out most of this report. A lot of the high, high titles and stuff, especially with regards to dates, I cannot, it's a. Mandatory field that's locked out and I can't change the thing, so. I will go through and I'll give you my best understanding of all the numbers that I have currently here. So under Human Resources, the numbers there, we have thirty one established positions with twenty six members working. Three members on special leave and one should be, say, should have one hard vacancy at this point in time. I will add to that, that as of second week of July, we'll have two hard vacancies. However, by the end of July and the first week of August, we have three more members coming into the detachment, so those hard vacancies will be short-lived. Support staff remaining relatively static, eleven point five positions, ten point five working. We have one. Employee away on mat leave, should be returning the end of August. On your municipal budget, financial O and M, I have the final, if you want to pen these in for you, I got these this morning. Overtime for P fourteen, so this would be the end of the, our fiscal year at the end of March. So overtime, we were down by one hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty five. Operating and maintenance, we are up by two thousand. Core commissioners, down by fourteen thousand, five hundred and twenty four. With an overall savings from last year to, to this, sorry, from twenty twenty, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty of a hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty three. Where we saw the increases on the operating and maintenance side of things were with regards to vehicle repairs, which were close to fourteen thousand. And fuel being at over fifty, three hundred dollars from the year previously. Sorry for those quick numbers, but I just wanted to get you an end there. I'll have a Q, a strong Q two for you with where we're at, at that point. Page two, it should say April, May at the category at the top there. These numbers are up to the end of May. Persons crimes are up fifty seven percent, property crime down fourteen percent, with overall criminal code down thirty eight percent. Of particular note on the persons crimes being up, this is in relation to assaults, criminal harassment and uttering threats being up significantly. And when checking the statistics on these, these are based on an increase in domestic violence files by approximately thirty two percent. Criminal code overall up just six percent. And then the significant ones, other traffic down eighty. Provincial traffic up thirty two from four ninety seven to six fifty four, that's being the provincial traffic unit being in the area, writing additional tickets in the area. And then you'll see the remainder, motor vehicle collisions down thirty three percent. So overall, April, May over year to year from twenty to twenty one, a decrease in property crime by fourteen percent. Was primarily driven by break and enters being down twenty four percent from eighty two to sixty two. Theft under five thousand being down eleven percent from one forty eight to one forty. And theft of motor vehicle down fifty three percent from thirty seven to nineteen reported files. Page three is, is our priorities and we've gone over these before. This page only has room for three priorities, but we have five, so I've put them in numerical order. So to reduce and prevent property crime, thus far, our priorities, our initiatives under that priority are completing search warrant. We've done one of twelve so far. Intel meetings, we've done three of twelve. And proactive drug enforcement, we've completed ten investigations of the total sixty that we are ballparking for the year. Politic offender management, curfew checks, forty five of six hundred. We're a little short on that one there, and that is due to somewhat of a breakdown with regards to the analyst not being in the detachment. We're going to be another couple of months before we see that analyst position being filled. So what the analyst does is, she does a complete review of all those prolific offenders in our detachments as their conditions of their probation and. Other court documents and then updates the curfew checkbook, which then the members utilize to go and then do the curfew check. So there's just a little bit of intel grinding of information there that's kind of slowing things up a little bit. Warrant list, media outputs, three of thirty. I'm working with our local media here and I'm local media rep at the detachment to try and do a weekly input into the local paper here moving forward. Which should significantly bump that up. Priority three, persons crimes. And then you see the results on number three on the next piece now, bear spray bylaw. We're in the process with CPO Sergeant Trent Jaeger to develop a bear spray bylaw for the city. We have a draft into legal to have a look at the wording of that particular bylaw, and that will be forthcoming to you guys in Q two. Education program, weapons, guns and violent, weapon and gun is in development. It's this COVID restricted. This is more of a face-to-face for our members getting out in the community and speaking to people on this. And we're assigning this project to one of the incoming cadets, which will be arriving in second week of July. Number four is reduce and prevent property crime, and one of the initiatives there is the pawn shop bylaw that we were discussing here just a couple of weeks ago. Past third reading and pending pawn shop owners engagement, we're going to have to be in touch with them. Trent is working on this. And then getting the agreed upon database and computers and that sort of stuff going and some training to those shopkeepers. Community events. Not a big one in the city here. We've completed one of our eight boat patrols, have two planned for June. Social media programming, we have one of our members working on a Facebook site with regards, and this is going to be launched in the midsummer. Perhaps probably closer to the first part of September. They're undergoing some training on exactly how to run this Facebook site and keeping in line all the rules with. Regards to bilingualism. And downtown foot patrols have thirty eight of two hundred and fifty here. That number is actually at fifty four. And thirty eight of those have been done on the overtime budget and the remaining done off the watch on a regular patrol basis. Last page is the community engagements. I won't bore you, you can read those ones on the number of dates, so we've had. Seven engagements over this last quarter with regards to community consultations and so on. Lastly, is the secondary report with regards to the downtown patrols, that's this document here. So what I've done, as indicated there in Q1, we've completed is fifty four downtown, downtown patrols in the area. We're beginning, keeping the statistics with reference to these foot patrols. These are self-explanatory. Business contacts would be the number of times that the member has contacted one of the business owners. And then subject contacts is the number of people that they're engaging with on the foot patrols. Total number of foot patrols, vehicle patrols are also there. Those are mostly completed by either the members on the foot patrol, if it's in Clement. Or if they're doing regular patrols outside of their regular foot patrol on their shift. And also all the regular members keeping the downtown area in their mind when they're doing their patrols to and from the detachment. Total number of foot patrols are there, one eighty seven thus far to, that's in keeping with the number we've done in June so far of eleven. Of that fifty four have been completed in Q1. Calls for service in the, around the downtown core, you see the totals there, two hundred and thirty seven. Number of arrests, one hundred and three, and total charges, seventy six. The next table goes into the number of calls for service just in relation to the twenty seven, twenty four seven hub. And these, these numbers are self-explanatory with regards to the different types of offenses that we are dealing with there. What you will notice is the total number for April and May is at thirty nine and thirty eight total occurrences there. And these numbers are staying rather consistent. I suspect it's going to be up a little higher in June. It has been a little busier around the hub in the month of June. But again, I'll have those full numbers for you on the next report. And lastly, on the last page, other Q two's, curfew checks, forty five, street checks, three hundred and forty five, and check stops, four. And warrants executed being sixty. That is a summary of my reports. I am able to answer any questions you may have with regards to these statistics.
Any questions? Wayne and Indy?
Keith, why don't you do the. The chart on downtown foot patrols. And it's in the blue one there. And. So. Calls for service over one, two, three, four, five months, two thirty seven. Almost half, so forty some odd percent of those end up in a, an arrest. And so a hundred and three arrests out of two hundred and thirty seven calls. And then the charges being seventy six percent, so of those arrests. They were significant enough to have charges filed. Is that a fair assumption?
Could be anything from a ticket to cause disturbance to something more significant. Yeah, those, those numbers, the seventy six could be anything from a ticket or to cause disturbance or something more significant.
And would you be able to tell me? How many of these ended up before a judge? Because part of, part of the conversation that we had with yourself and Open Door was the whole referral process. Back for, for counseling and things of that nature. So I'm, I'm just trying to follow it through to its conclusion. And if you don't have it, that's fine.
I don't have that number. I'm just trying to think if maybe I could extrapolate it back from the other. If I was to add up all the number of charges in the other column here, seven, ten, thirteen charges. Now, okay, it'd be too much of a random guess.
Okay.
You can almost say that all thirteen charges in, that were in relation to the hub are, are most likely going before JP of some sort.
Thirteen in June.
Yeah, from May, April and May and the next column down, you add all the charges together, those would go specifically. Where we'd have something like a failed comply, where you see across there, you have one in April, one in May, total two, two arrests, two charges. Those definitely would be going before JP, for example, right? That's where you see, no, you don't see too much ambiguity there. It's, it's a straightforward breach is a straightforward criminal code charge, right?
Okay, now you've lost me somewhere in this process.
Sorry.
No, so because when you're saying you see one and then you see another one in June, I don't know where you're seeing one.
No, May. Sorry, so you, you look at the second column down, these are all the charge occurrences and charges and arrests in relation to the hub itself. That's why I was trying to go back, I was trying to take that number, take it up to the seventy six and see if I could extrapolate back and it wasn't quite working, so.
Okay. I guess I was just, the reason I asked the question, I was wondering how successful are, we are being with regard to taking it back through the court system? And rather than, than jail time or.
Yeah, I, I think a better way to, to, to update you on this would be. Our, our drug and mental health diversion program that we've established with the hub. And that's where we're arresting someone who's a bit of a prolific offender and needs to be kind of forced into some sort of. Compliance with regards to programming or counseling and that sort of thing. What we found is we've, we've charged thirteen people thus far and put them into the program. But what we're finding is the. And I want to say this politely as I can. The comprehension of the fate of the charges and that sort of stuff is being lost on the individual. And that, in a lot of cases, the mental health is, is not where it needs to be in order for them to understand the pitfalls of where they're going. So we're actually, actually having to kind of pull back from that and relook at it a little bit and, and again, kind of adjust our program accordingly. Instead of just firing these people right into the court system. We have to look at the mental health piece first. So is it a case of they come before the court, two weeks down the road, and we've got all the supporting report from the hub and from our file and everything else? But they perhaps need a thirty day assessment. So we're trying to get that done on the front end rather than finding out halfway through the process. Does that explain where I'm going with that, or did I lose you?
No, no, to some degree, no, I get it. I guess. The question that arises out of that for me is. So are we? Are we not doing what we said we are going to do because of the, the lack of the connection between the crime and, and the, the direction? So I guess what I'm leaning up to is, are you or Open Door? And this sounds inappropriate, I don't mean it to sound that way, playing judge and jury, playing judge and jury, or in that they're not getting to the magistrate?
No, they'll get to the magistrate. It's a case of we may have to do some more proactive work with mental health prior to them getting to the magistrate. So that they can have an under, better understanding of, you know, the circumstances, what they found themselves in.
So for example, then. You pick up a prolific offender, if I can use that term, and you recognize some significant mental health issues.
Yep.
And so rather than processing them through the court system, it would be, how do you? How do you mandate that, that extra mental health intervention?
It's still within the judicial system. It's just before they start giving out sentences and before they start applying. Counseling or treatment or something like that. It's just one step before, it's held in abeyance, it's brought before the judge, the judge would then order, say, a thirty day psychiatric assessment.
Okay.
Okay. It's in the system, it's just a case, we're having to kind of rein the horse in just a little bit, saying, okay, we need to walk before we can jog, before we can run. Yeah, we have to put the walk step in first.
I got it, thank you.
Okay.
Verfley, you had said that you were down in your overtime costs this year, is that?
Yep, everything is in the, is in the negative.
So we have budgeted extra overtime for foot patrols and things like that. Does that work into that dollars or is it dollars above that?
It, it will come back as a credit to you, more or less, like, no, not, it will come back as a credit. The bill will be there, but you saved it on, on last year's budget. You weren't billed a hundred and, or a hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty three in relation to the year before. The, the budget will still be there for the, for the downtown foot patrols, but we saved money overall in nineteen twenty.
So. We still will cut the extra check for the. we still will cut the extra check for the, like, this forty-two thousand dollars or whatever we budgeted for.
Right. So this year, if I continue to save on overtime with added members to the strength, we're going to save, save member, overtime on member hours because we have the extra members. That will result in a saving in the overtime budget, which ultimately would work out to be a push at the end of next fiscal year. So there's X number of dollars we pay for staff wages, and then there's overtime on top of that.
Which is budgeted.
Sorry?
Which is budgeted.
Which is usually budgeted in, budgeted in by OSB will give you an overall, what you need to kind of put away to make sure that you get there, right? By saving a hundred and twelve thousand dollars off the overtime budget, that isn't compared to the year before that. And the year, and we saved on the year before that as well, right? So consequently, by looking at, keeping an eye on the bottom line, ensuring we have as member, many members on, on the road as we can, we're saving on the overall bill to the city in overtime. The budget, budget for this particular stuff and thing will be there, we'll have to pay that, but I'm sure the savings will come back in the number of extra members we have applied to the road this year should have another resulting savings in overtime like we see here.
I guess then my question is, why then those extra foot patrols wouldn't have just gone over there, then we wouldn't have had to have that forty-two thousand dollar check?
We could have done it that way, but then if we have four major events, say, at the end of this last year, then all of a sudden you guys are getting a bill for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra in overtime that you guys would not be aware of. At least now you know exactly what that amount of dollar, dollar value will be. And if I'm able to keep the pencil sharp for the rest of the year and keep as many chairs filled as I can, we should see that savings come back.
And we had set up an RCMP reserve, Sue. We'd set up an RCMP reserve, and part of what we're going to be using that for is the contract negotiations that are going on right now with the RCMP and the salaries going up, because those are going back to two thousand and sixteen, I think, in terms of contact, contract negotiations. So we'll have back pay going to members from two sixteen, and we're using the RCMP reserve to cover those off.
Because I'm unrepresented, I can't comment on that.
That's fine.
That's for the MPF to say.
Yep.
But I believe they're going back to seventeen, not sixteen.
Okay, perfect. And with the stats you have related to the hub, do you have, and I mean it goes to total criminal code calls for service as opposed to the specifics for the hub? Would you have a breakdown of how many assaults, how many breach of peace? Those same stats citywide to compare what we're seeing from the hub or downtown, and if, if that's.
I, I don't have that, but I can get it to you for the next quarter.
Yep.
It's easy enough for me to just pull those out, and I'll just minus them from the totals, and I should be able to break that out for you.
That would be fantastic. And the subject contacts, is that member initiated, like, member A sees somebody on the street, they go and initiate that contact?
Or it's someone coming up to us talking about, or anyone that we might want to interact with during our foot patrol.
Perfect.
And we split out the ones where we actually go into a business and actually talk to a business person, or that sort of stuff, we split that up.
That was it. Thanks.
I'd love to be able to share what actually is in here, but I'm not at liberty to.
Okay. Any further questions to Keith? One, one, twice? Thank you, Keith.
And I understand there's going to be a conversation with regards to reporting and statistics, and what do you want to see and what you don't want to see and that sort of stuff. And, and I'm very open to just like what was proposed, you're just, can you give me a comparison of this for next time? And I have no problem with that, other than I'm probably doing it myself, but if, if you want to know how many in our weapons offences, if it's guns or this or that, I just need a little bit of lead time and I can pull those numbers apart. It may take, if it gets too daunting, if I have to go through a thousand files to determine if we had eight bear spraying and not, then I'll, I'll let you know that ahead of time. But if you want a breakdown accordingly, I can do that. I just need a little bit of lead time and an idea of what it is you're looking for. And I have no problem with that.
Thank you. And we'll move on to to C, which is Wayne, regarding your.
And, and some of it's sort of been addressed, but, and I, I know with the Alberta air tour coming, and Kathy has mentioned there's some activities planned. We're twelve days away effectively today, and, and depending what happens with COVID restrictions and so forth. But how does, how does this play out in terms of part of our tourism, marketing, and, and all the rest of it? So do we have any idea kind of what's in the mix or what might be happening?
Through the chair to councillor Nielsen, I obviously was away last week, and I, I have not had time to catch up with the team on this right now. I will touch base, I know Candace has been talking to Wendy about a bunch of different opportunities to showcase the city, so I will take it as an information request and will send an update to council when I get that information.
We can't hear. Please speak up, please.
I'm sorry. With, with everybody hoping to get back to some sense of normalcy. A year ago, maybe it was two years ago now, we made arrangements to create a transportation thing out to Musqueachies for, for Pawaw. And, and and given, I guess, on some levels, our, our limitations in, in continuing that relationship building with Musqueachies, and as part of potential showcase of Wataquen and area, I, I thought the whole notion of facilitating getting folks out to a Pawaw, and especially in light of what our country has seen in the last short while here, I, I didn't want to lose I didn't want to lose this as an opportunity to showcase our community and to, to maintain a relationship with, with forebends at Musqueachies. And so I, I hope that that's still potentially on our radar to facilitate something like that, or at least have conversations as we get more information perhaps out of Musqueachies about what they might be doing and how we might want to help facilitate some activities there. So that would be my hope, but I just make it as a statement. I don't know what my colleagues feel about it. And then my last comment is, I've had a number of comments come back to me about the the rebranding launch and, and a particular picture that was taken that's received quite a bit of notoriety in terms of we're, we're trying to convince people that we have mountain scenes in Wataquen and, and Ren doing a masterful job of saying, no, really, it's just clouds in the background. But at first blush, I think that picture is really misleading. And, and I, I don't know, is there intentions to do something with that, or just try and convince everybody that we're not advertising, that we live in the Rockies, that it's really, no. And I, and I'm not trying to make light of it, but my first reaction when I saw it, I thought, where the heck? And why would we use this picture? And it wasn't until I blew it right up, it was, as Ren said, it was clouds, not mountains, but at first blush, it looks like we are selling that we lived in Canmore or something. Has there been any conversation, Sue, on that?
Through the chair to councillor Nielsen, I, I believe there was, but I wasn't here, so if any of the staff have any information, they can tap in.
I can take that one. So through the chair to councillor Nielsen, we have definitely received that feedback as well. We're going to be looking at changing out that photo for a different one, still from By the Lake, but on a different, maybe more clear day where there are not clouds in the background. And we'll be looking at switching that over, out over the next couple of weeks on all of our digital assets.
Great. And I just want to comment on Ren's masterful approach to try to convince everybody of, about, really look, look just a little bit harder, folks, but she handled it really well, so.
I can confirm it is By the Lake Park.
Thank you.
We'll go to to Kate.
Thank you. So with Canada Day coming up, and as councillor Nielsen already brought up with the situation that's kind of been unfolding across the country right now with finding mass graves in residential schools. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the fact that the new data has shown that if they continue finding bodies at the rate that they are, they're now predicting that there is upwards of seventy thousand more children buried in these unmarked graves. And they said that even at the rate that we're looking at right now, it's twenty times more than the original estimate from the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Now, with all that being said, the town of Devon already released a statement that they would like to see their residents wear orange during Canada Day. St Albert has already cancelled their Canada Day celebrations, and numerous other cities across the country has. I'm personally going to be wearing orange on Canada Day, and I just wanted to encourage other councillors to wear orange as well. And anyone else that feels the need to commemorate these people as well. You can't hear.
Can't hear you. I just can't hear you.
Okay. I'm personally going to be wearing orange on Canada Day. And I just want to encourage other councillors that if they would like to also wear orange on Canada Day, I think that is a good show of support for those that have been affected from all of these findings and to our First Nations communities that we are close to as well. I just think that it is a good show of support for them, so I just want to encourage the other council members to wear orange as well.
Just, I'll speak to that too as well. I had the president of the Legion reach out for my thoughts on Canada Day ceremonies and the program that they're going to be having with the Pancake Breakfast. And he asked that I reach out to the four nations. So I was able to speak to three of the chiefs, and all three chiefs still supported the ceremonies taking place at the Legion. I'm hoping to get at least one of them come and speak at it as we have the convoy coming through the city as well. They've scheduled that program for one o'clock at the Reynolds Alberta Museum. So I've asked that they attend the ceremony as well, and if they do, that they'll have the opportunity to speak there as well. But of three out of the four that I was able to speak to, all supported the Legion still holding their ceremonies and taking them over to silence and using it as an opportunity to share all that's been going on and not still take away from a dark piece of our history that we're celebrating, or a dark piece of our history in Canada isn't all of what Canada and its history is. So the fact that we are still celebrating Canada Day, but taking the opportunity to acknowledge the remains that have been found with the residential schools and everything going along with that. So we do have support from three-quarters of Musqueachies. I just haven't heard from the other chief.
Absolutely. No, thanks for the input on that. But yeah, that's why I was saying, instead of cancelling everything, I would like to just see waves of orange.
Yep. And just for that last formal information request that you've taken, make sure that it's a direction of council and not from one member of council. Not that I don't oppose that you're going to get that information back, but if we're going to get into the habit of getting a request for information from council, not from an individual member of council.
Is that for the airshow?
Sorry?
The airshow stuff?
Yeah, the information coming back, or on the, the events that councillor Nielsen is looking for, for information back from administration.
So my, my intention was just to give you an update on what, what admin had talked about, related to the airshow, and I was just going to leave it at that.
But you had taken it as a formal information request. So still a direction from council, not council.
Yes.
The COVID nineteen vaccine outreach, I'd received an email from an organisation nineteen to zero, and I'm wondering if we want them to share information. I think what would be important for me is that it's sharing information from nineteen to zero, not from the city of Wataquen. So I just wanted to know if council supported that or not. I'd sent the email to you guys to see if that was something that you wanted to have done. They would do town hall style webinars, sharing handouts with clear and easy to understand vaccine information or other formats that we find suitable for our community. Is that something that we want to have happen, or are we going to let the provincial government and their campaign for vaccines be what we resort to?
The, the email that you sent out sounded like they wanted us to facilitate this. So when you say that it's not coming from council, but aren't they expecting that we are going to organize anything at all on this?
It didn't, that's not the way that I have
interpreted.
Interpreted. The outreach that they're going to do, not that we're going to do, would be town halls, webinars, sharing handouts, and sharing vaccine information. So I took it as they were going to do that. I just didn't want it to be, I wouldn't want it to see it as the city of Wataquen is now taking this, this on. If zero to, or nineteen to zero was an organisation looking to get information out about vaccines, then it would be coming from nineteen to zero, not the city of Wataquen. Oh, well, for sure. And that's why I said that if these guys wanted to be the ones delivering that message, that's fine, not coming from the city of Wataquen.
I, I kind of agree with what Al here, because some of us have different views on, on some of this stuff here. If we do the cities, then we're actually going to get different ideas from each councillor, even though we support it. But I, I think let, let the big boys do what they have to do, because I don't want to be starting answering questions or doing, or having our staff take the time to do it. This organisation is to come and do it, let them do it.
This is an AHS situation. Having said that, with the low vaccination rates that are in our community, if there's some way that we can help within our community, I don't mind, but I don't want to spearhead anything. I don't think that that's, that's, I think the staff's got other things that they need to be working on than trying to deal with AHS situation. So I don't think this is something that the city needs to be dealing with.
The AUMA is hosting the Summer Municipal Leaders Caucus here in Wataquen on July twenty-ninth. And what, we get a chance to present on something local, and I thought we could have something as an indigenous theme. I was thinking about having a drum group and a chief or two coming to speak on what land acknowledgement means to them, truth and reconciliation, building relationships with many of the municipalities that would be attending. They'll be attending both virtually and in person. Many of the municipalities don't border on a First Nation reserve, so don't have the ability to build those relationships like we do. So having the ability to have a chief or an elder come and speak to the group, I think would be beneficial through my work with mid-sized city mayors and AUMA. That's been one of the things that has been a hurdle for many municipalities, is while they want to build relationships, they want to have a better understanding, especially of the culture and community residents in their municipalities, they don't know how to initiate that, so. So this will be something that will be worked on through AUMA and mid-sized cities over the next couple of years, I would imagine. If we have the ability to host the Leaders Caucus and have that component to it, I think it would be really good. The only thing is, is that if we do get a drum group in, there would likely be an honorarium. And I'm just wondering if there is budget for something like that? Or if that's something that needs to be made a motion of in the council meeting?
Through the chair to Mayor Gandam, I do have a public relations budget that we could pull it from.
And have you talked to Dan Roode yet or is that?
I sent him an email, so I'll follow up with him now that I'm back.
Yeah, and I talked to him last Thursday during my last board meeting and he said that he would be reaching back out to you again. So I encourage everybody to attend that. They work out really well. There's five municipal leaders caucus throughout the province, starting mid-July. I'll be in Bull Island and High River. And then the following week, I'll be in Sexman and Wataasquen. And then there's another one in Redwater, I think. All of them will have, other than the local presentation, all of them will have the same content. So I'll be presenting on behalf of the AUMA and then obviously presented here in Wataasquen on behalf of the city as well as a board member there. And out of all of the dates there shown, I think there was between four and six board members attending each of the plus staff, attending each of those dates. And then with Wataasquen, I think 10 board members coming, plus staff. So it should be a good turnout here. And the hate-
Tyler, on that one, do we need to pre-register with anybody?
Yeah.
Through Karen?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You've sent that email right Karen? Yeah. And the hate bill speech, sorry, did anybody else have anything else on? The topics for municipal leaders caucus hasn't been set yet. It will be right away. The hate bill speech that I got from MP Madores, is that something that we want to attach our name to? So the endorsement is on behalf of 13,000 residents of Wataasquen, the mayor and council of Wataasquen endorse MP Peter Julian's private members motion, M84 anti-hate crimes and incidents and his private members bill, C313 banning symbols of hate act. Are we okay signing our name to that? Karen, I'm going to send this to you and if you can just attach our information, that would be perfect. Just to the original, please.
Anything other, you have known you addition? So we'll move into 3A, CO's update.
So I was watching the emails when I was away last week and there was a discussion around reporting and crimes, crime events that are happening within the community. And so I wanted to, I did have a chat with Keith a couple of weeks ago and he had sent me, we were just working on some updated numbers in between his reporting times. Obviously today he brought forward the stats for the current reporting period. But if there's ever any questions in between, Keith has indicated he's more than willing to send those to me. So if you have specific questions, just let me know and I can forward those to Keith. But more so the discussion was when things are happening within the community, when does council know? What should they know, that sort of stuff? And so I can confirm that when a major event is happening in the city, both the mayor and myself are on a on a message system that's set up for the region to notify people when something's happening big in the community. They will let us know if there is danger and then we would work with their communications team and we would let council know. Outside of that, it's really just as information and let them do their job and so that we can say, "Yeah, we know that road is blocked, you know, the police are there, let them handle it." So based on the emails that I saw last week, I believe there was a desire to have a discussion around what should be reported, when, what does council need to know when? And so Inspector Drax is also here to help with some of that. And if nobody wants to talk about it, we don't have to.
I guess my concern was that there were some happenings that were on the city facility, although the facility, the city facility was leased out to another organization. And so that raised the question for me is that as the owner of the facility that something has happened in, should we be informed of that? In terms of, you know, we've had this conversation before and I don't want to, it wouldn't be my intention to try and saddle Keith with copious paperwork because I'm sure he doesn't have enough of that already. But so for me, it was just that it was on city, on a city, in a city facility or on city grounds. And I guess for me is that if there was a situation that was pretty violent, and I didn't know when I use the word pretty violent, what qualifiers I had attached to that. But when there was an incident, I think in front of RBC with a machete, for example, I mean, whether that's accurate or not is a whole nother story. But that's what I was hearing and I had, I had zero response to that. I had no idea. And not, and maybe I don't need to have an idea. Maybe I should be like every citizen that says, "I have no idea what's happened with that." But my biggest concern was that being on our, in our facility.
Through the chair to councillor Nielsen, I, I mean, to me, I don't look at that facility any different than the pool. If an assault happens at the pool, we don't get notified. Unless there is a reason to protect the public, protect city staff. If city staff were involved, we would get notified through our internal process. But if the expectation, you know, is that we're more aware of what's happening, then we can work with Keith to see what that would look like. But I think that's a lot of, a lot of extra work where there's nothing we can do, right? So knowing, knowing that something is happening major is good, but all of the other crimes, I mean, there's a lot that happened in a month, right?
Just to go to your comment there, Mr. Nielsen. I meet with Paul and Trent and all our other partners, CAOs within the area. And we discuss current events that happened the week prior. And if there's something significant that's happening around the hub, for example, or whatever, that's going to make a big splash in the media or something like that, I'm usually looped in that tripartite group there being the CAO, Paul and the mayor. And I usually give a little bit of a, I can't get much information because it's an ongoing investigation, but I usually turn the tap off of, you know, we're not on a manhunt here. It's managed, right? If it's going to be something significant, then we usually have something in the press shortly thereafter, the next day or within the next couple of days, which then informs everybody of which. But I would just caution council not to listen too much of what goes off on the rant and rave and that sort of stuff because it is completely inaccurate. If there is something that is developed that you're hearing about, if you get it back to Sue or Paul or the mayor and he wants to shoot me a message to say, "This is what we're hearing. Can you let me know what's happening?" I can set the record straight that way. So if you have a question, just shoot it over to one of the three and they'll get it to me and I can find out what's happening.
Just one of the two, myself or Sue?
Okay, the next piece that I wanted to chat about real quick was capital projects update. So I realized that we, we had a late start to budget approval. We were a little bit late getting a few projects out. We're anticipating to bring a full capital update to the next council meeting. But I just wanted to kind of give you the heads up that there are some that we're having some challenges with, whether they came in over budget or we need to do a little bit more design work and rejig the project schedules and stuff like that. So we'll be bringing that forward, but if you had any specific questions, we'd be happy to answer them today if we could. Otherwise, they'll be at the next council meeting.
Sue, I have a question. That 62nd Street over by the airport, I noticed the vacuum trucks have been working there. So one, was that on budget and two, is it conclusion this year or next year?
So the 62nd Street project, the tender was awarded and construction will be starting in the next couple of weeks. It did come in on budget through the tender and it should be completed by the end of construction season in 2021.
Who is the contractor?
Just one second.
I can answer that. Yeah, it's New Edge, through the mayor.
The Chicken Coop, did that come out too for tender?
Which avenue is that?
Didn't hear that?
Which avenue is that? 55?
Behind Gabe's Park. Where it's planted trees.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We'll have to, do you know if the utility tender went out? Yeah. Yeah, I think it is 55F. We'll have to look, we'll have a more substantial update at the next council meeting. But a lot of the tenders either have closed already or are set to close right away.
Any further questions? If not, we'll move into closed session. I need a motion. Do you want in the camera?